Okay. Um, roll call please.
Roa.
Here.
Donahue.
Here.
Pataglia.
Here.
Manjul Bitner.
Here.
Sterns.
Here. Um, if you're able, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you have a cellphone or an iPad or an iWatch, if you would mind muting it, I will try to remember to tell you to turn it back on during the meeting. Uh, Mary Ann, meeting notices?
On April 17th, 2019, an executive session was held to discuss real estate and litigation. On May 1st, 2019, an executive session was held to discuss litigation.
Okay. Uh, approval of minutes, motion please?
Second, Your Honor.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call?
Roa.
Aye.
Donahue.
Aye.
Pataglia.
Aye.
Manjul Bitner.
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye. Andy, do we have anybody signed up for any, uh, for the audience?
No one has signed in to speak, Your Honor.
Okay. Managers report. Andy?
Uh, evening, Council. I'll start right off with an introduction of Catherine Katie Wickert. Wickert.
Yes.
Hi, Katie. Uh, who has, uh, been hired and will actually officially start Monday, but is here shadowing Mary Ann this evening as a deputy city clerk. Um, and in the, um, transition as Mary Ann was promoted to the Director of Community Development position, um, has been doing double duty, uh, assuming those new roles, Katie will step in and fill the meeting administration roles and the, um, uh, will work under her as deputy city clerk, will support Gary and Mary Ann and the property maintenance inspectors. We expect them to move over from the fire station next week. We're getting all their, uh, computers set up. Um, and Katie will also spend some time at the reception desk. So, welcome, Katie.
Welcome, Your Honor.
Uh, so Katie's hiring is, um, sort of several, lots of, few new personnel changes. Um, we have a new police officer who has started, we'll introduce him to Council at the June study session, that is Terrence Dottie. Um, and we've got two new part-time firemen, so we'll have swearing-in at the next meeting. Um, just prior to the meeting, Councilman Donahue had asked, this past Saturday was our city cleanup day. Um, we received, we had took 79 loads that we had received, which is down from the prior years. We've been at 100, 120, 130 years prior. Um, in terms of total revenue and expenses, I'll share that with Council at a future meeting. We're still tabulating some of those, but I'll make sure to share that information with you. Um, and thank you, I just, I want to thank Councilman, but I think actually all of you were there at some point. Oh, no, you were out of town, Your Honor, but I think, um, everyone at some point was there in the morning, so we appreciate you helping out when that was nice. Um, if you look across through the window at Diamond Park there, there's, um, the gazebo is under construction, uh, less than contract with Lester Millam and Masonry doing, uh, cleaning and pointing a brick and replacing some of the sandstone capstones on the edge, um, some maintenance that we're catching up with there. And then we've seeded several sections of the park too, hence all the ugly caution tape for maybe another week or so, um, as we get grass, trying to get grass started without being impacted. Um, all part of our plans to have it looking tip-top shape for Memorial Day, um, and we'll be having all the trees mulched shortly as well, so, um, certainly by the Memorial Day holiday is our goal to have everything looking, uh, stick and span for Diamond Park.
Andy, while you're there, may I say what a nice job Deb did on the flower boxes. Everything looks wonderful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, one of my sort of parting, uh, messages under my report was going to be a, a thank you to staff. There are, there is so much going on right now in terms of the contracts that you'll see award tonight and all the moving parts, and we've got everyone firing on all cylinders and, um, and I just want to thank staff and, and many cases going above and beyond and participating in Saturday's cleanup and planting flowers out front. Um, we've got a good team here and, um, proud to, we shall be proud of the, the folks at Workforce here. Um, DeArmond Park, I'll give a shout-out to Bennett, who's not here this evening, but DeArmond Park, uh, will be planted this season. It was not planted last year by the master gardeners because of the construction related to the bypass. That's a partnership with the Western Pennsylvania Conservancy. Um, we've, uh, we've put new valve boxes in there, so Public Works has been there putting some new valve boxes that, that, um, do the watering. Um, it was just tilled today, uh, by their landscape contractor, ready for Saturday's planting. Um, there's going to be a little tree trimming in the park. We've, uh, met with the DeArmond family on the, some other minor improvements that we're going to be making and, um, so I want to thank Bennett. Uh, he's really coordinating with all those parties and also Nathan Zizula to the Public Works Department. So, also another, like Diamond Park, another showpiece, um, we're whipping that into shape too, so. Um, lastly, Your Honor, I'll mention, um, Chief Haskell, just earlier this year was at a conference, I think it was a statewide meeting of other career fire chiefs, and they were talking about grant funds that were available for EMS service, and he had inquired and, um, said, "How are you getting these funds? What do we, I'm not aware of this program." Well, here, it turns out we were able to, we, we are offering QRS service, a quick response service, that's the, everyone's familiar with the Rescue Seven vehicle, I think people still refer to it as, but essentially our EMS response vehicle that we use. Well, here, we were able to re-license it as a squad service, which is a nuance in the licensing code. Um, we had to add two pieces of minor equipment to carry on the vehicle to, to have it licensed as a squad vehicle, which now makes us eligible for, um, annual grant funding, uh, competitive grant funding, but there's a pot of money that we could get up to, um, $10,000 each year that we could apply for related to EMS equipment and whatnot. So, um, so that changed, that relicensing was done based on information we had learned at a conference earlier this year, and it was, turned out to be a simple, um, fix. So, we're looking forward to hopefully going after some resources there. Uh, other than that, that's all I have, Your Honor. If there's any questions, Council.
Anybody have any questions for? Uh, communications, Mary Ann.
Uh, we received a letter, yeah, actually, we received a letter on May 13th from Dan Crandall, member of the RDA Board, um, giving us his resignation from the board. He had served his full term effective May 5th, um, and submitted a letter indicating he was not going to renew or wanting to stay on the board, um, until a new member is found.
I'm just going to add to that. Um, when we received a notification about Dan, uh, resigning, first of all, we want to thank him for his many, many years, um, being on the RDA Board and Chairman. I know he, he worked very hard when we were doing the entrepreneurial grants and, and things like that, so first of all, we want to thank Dan a great deal for his time and effort. Um, but I also contacted the new chairman, which is Dennis Frampton, and I asked if he would check with his board if there was anybody that they thought they may have interest. Um, we want to make sure we're transparent, and the reason we're going to be doing that is because it's hard to appoint people to, uh, boards when, when we don't have people knocking down the doors. And we always have done in the past is ask the chairman of the board if there was any, uh, input that they'd like to have, because they have to work with the individuals. Um, so he said he would be checking on that, and I told him I would announce that tonight that we're looking for replacement.
It doesn't pay.
It does not pay, no.
It's very time-consuming.
For an example, we have an opening on the Rec Authority that we have not appointed,
um, and the reason for that is that I'm actually hoping that we can find somebody with some financial background and financials for the future of the Rec Board that we can maybe appoint to them.
Well, that's interesting that you said that, that, you know, all of these boards and authorities have, people have certain skills that they need. It's, it's not like anybody can be, you know, anybody can be appointed to Redevelopment Authority or the SOAR Authority or BAR Authority, but we look for people that have certain skills that help those agencies out.
So, and of course, that'd be helpful to the organizations, so, if you hear of any, um, I guess we're going to be sending a letter to Mary Ann, um, whose the letters get sent to, if they have an interest?
To the city clerk's office and we'll...
Oh, you mean people are interested?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can email them.
Right.
Mayor, I would move to accept with regret Mr. Crandall's resignation.
Second with regret.
Okay. Um, any other comments?
No, that's going to be a big hole in the Redevelopment Board, that.
Uh, I really liked Dan and I miss him, but I still see him around town, and, uh, I like Dennis, but Dennis, he's been taken over for a while, and this is great.
Okay. Well, we wish him the best. I know he, in the letter, he refers to his three grandchildren, so we hope he gets to spend a lot of time with his grandkids. Um, roll call please?
Roa.
Aye.
Donahue.
Aye.
Pataglia.
Aye.
Manjul Bitner.
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye. Under old business, I don't have anything. Uh, new business, resolution authorizing destruction of records. Mary Ann?
Whereas by virtue of Resolution Number 47 adopted August 24th, 2004, the City of Meadville declared its intent to follow the schedule and procedures for the disposition of records as set forth in the Municipal Record Manual approved on July 16th, 1993, and as an updated periodically, and whereas in accordance with Act 428 of 1968, each individual act of disposition shall be approved by resolution of the governing body of the municipality. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, in accordance with the above cited Municipal Records Manual hereby authorizes the disposition of the following attached public records.
Motion?
Go ahead, Your Honor.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I beg to pile, is this, this looks like a lot of records.
Um, this actually, I mean, in terms of volume, um, probably the back corner, like of that section of chairs stacked, it's not too bad. Um, since we moved, um, to this facility in 2012, we have much less storage space, right? So, we, it caused us to be pretty tight on our record retention schedule, so all these records that are on the list in front of you are at least, are part of the record retention schedule, but are all financial, mostly financial records, but are seven years or older. Um, and so we're, we're doing pretty well at keeping a pretty tight, uh, retention cycle at this point.
So, getting rid of these is not going to jeopardize Western civilization, as we know?
As far as we know, we hope not.
Do we have, uh, electronic backup?
Uh, no, and many of these, not all these records are, um, we would on the accounting side, I mean, we have accounting records, uh, financial kind of records that go back, digital records that go back to...
Oh, at minimum, 2006. That's where our software pulls into.
Any other questions? Roll call?
Roa.
Aye.
Donahue.
Aye.
Pataglia.
Aye.
Manjul Bitner.
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye. Uh, resolution, um, signing authorization of CDBG and home invoice, invoices. Mary Ann?
Whereas the City of Meadville has received funds from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development in the form of a Community Development Block Grant, and whereas as a condition of CDBG funding, participating jurisdictions must delegate signing authority for CDBG invoices, and whereas Finance Director Debbie Oldakowski has been responsible for submitting CDBG invoices for payment, now therefore be it resolved that the City of Meadville delegates Finance Director Debbie Oldakowski with signing authority for CDBG invoices.
Motion please?
Second.
I'll second.
Do we have to do this every year?
I don't think we ever did this.
This is the...
We've done this in past, I believe.
I don't recall it.
I don't remember ever.
We get so many CDGB forms.
It's a joy, um, administering this program. Mostly, obviously, Council's aware we have the new contract with Crawford County Planning Office, um, so administratively, in fact, in most cases, um, in future years anyhow, they'll be submitting invoices on our behalf with an electronic drawdown system, but, um, this will give us official authority as a grant to your Debbie, technically official authority to submit invoices. It's pretty straightforward, I don't have anything else other than that's what's identified in the resolution.
Roll call?
Roa.
Aye.
Donahue.
Aye.
Pataglia.
Aye.
Manjul Bitner.
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye. Uh, resolution authorizing signature for transfer of retirement police dog indemnifying record agreement, uh, Mary Ann, sorry.
Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that the attached agreement is hereby approved and adopted as and for binding and effective agreement of the City of Meadville in accord with its terms, and the mayor, controller, and city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute and to attest such copies of the attached agreement in the manner required by law as may be reasonably required for the purposes of the parties thereto. Authorized signatures, transfer of retired police dog Lilo, and indemnification agreement.
Motion please?
Go ahead.
Second?
I'll second. Okay. Discussion?
I'm sure he'll do a good job for the rest of that dog's life.
I don't think you could pull that dog away from that.
I don't either.
And I don't think I'd want to try. Which stimulates the question, because the dog is a one-person dog, even though the value of the dog might exceed $1,000, really?
There's no way.
That's not a possibility.
You're right. I mean, sort of a, I don't know how much research you did on the third-class city, because it's a sort of unique situation, right? And the unique nature of transferring property.
I would actually, I'd submit that it's actually transferring a liability, because this dog is so unique and requires care and expense, uh, and he's the appropriate person to receive that liability responsibility for the dog.
Roll call please?
Roa.
Aye.
Donahue.
Aye.
Pataglia.
Aye.
Manjul Bitner.
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye. Resolution authorizing signature for the work-based learning program agreement. Mary Ann?
Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that the attached agreement is hereby approved and adopted as a, as and for binding and effective agreement of the City of Meadville in accord with its terms, and the mayor, controller, and city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute and to attest such copies of the attached agreement in the manner required by law as may be reasonably required for the purposes of the parties thereto. Authorized signatures, work-based learning program agreement between the City of Meadville and Youth Advocate Programs, Inc.
Motion please?
Second.
Second, Your Honor.
Thank you. Discussion?
Your Honor, this agreement is a, a second year of a similar program of working, it's funding provided by the State Office of Vocational Rehab that has funds available for certain individuals, students who meet certain qualifications, um, that can provide them sort of payments or stipends for their work. Uh, last year, we worked with a different agency who, um, so essentially, I'm trying to remember who we worked with last year. It was Cross Family, um...
Yes.
What's the name of the agency?
Family Connections.
Um, who was the overseen, who was sort of the pass-through agency who, they employed the students, so in this case, Youth Advocate Programs will employ the individuals, they will handle the payroll and the, um, payments and through the Office of Vocational Rehab. Uh, this just sort of lays out the terms, and again, this is sort of a second year, um, of doing, so they'll be supervised by Youth Advocate Program staff, and, um, work will be coordinated with the Public Works Department and the Public Works Director.
Any other questions? Uh, who covers the workers' time?
I'm pretty certain that is the responsibility of the, um, of Youth Advocate Program as the employer.
Correct. Okay, that, that is clear?
Yes.
Great.
Okay. Do you see it right off, Nancy?
It's two A's.
Yep, okay.
And where did this, where's he from?
Youth Advocate Programs, it's a local, they...
No, but I mean, how do they pick the person? How do they...
Um, they will be referred to the Youth Advocate Program by school system and, and probably their client, there might be clients that are already working with Youth Advocate Programs, um, so there's, there's only certain individuals that meet the qualifications for the funding.
So, there's more than one?
Yeah. Last year, we had, um, I mean, it waxed and waned, but I think we, I think we, fewer than we anticipated, but we had two or three or four last year that participated throughout the summer.
It's nice.
Um, it is. It's a nice way to do, to get accomplished some work that would probably never rise to the top of the Public Works priority list, but, um, is trimming trees, painting, um, some basic maintenance.
I'm also looking, what about, uh, unemployment insurance? Is that listed in here? Did I miss it?
I saw that.
Let's see what I have available here.
Actually, they're not employees of yet, um, yeah, places them with us, but we have no responsibility for any benefits.
Probably not here 90 days either.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, you have to be there 90 days.
I don't know what the break is on that.
I thought it was 90 days.
Okay. So, it's not needed, is what you're saying?
No.
Okay.
And it worked out well last year, you said?
It did, yes. I mean, I, I hope it'd be more effective, you know, in terms of better coordination, in terms of the work we get done with, between Public Works and, and the program, but it was a definite help.
If we ever have an individual that for whatever reason, where the city's not happy with, we can terminate that immediately.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Roll call?
Roa.
Aye.
Donahue.
Aye.
Pataglia.
Aye.
Manjul Bitner.
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye. Resolution authorizing signatures for change order number one with the HP Parkway Phase Two Construction. Mary Ann?
Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that the city manager is hereby authorized to execute change order number one with Porter Consulting Engineers, deleting bid alternate, alternate one, replace asphalt paving with gravel in parking lot, and bid alternate, alternate four, remove a, removal of four-foot chain link fencing and reverting to the original base bid.
Motion please?
Go ahead, Your Honor.
Second?
I'll second. Discussion? Andy?
Council, you'll recall, at the, what would have been the April meeting, we awarded the initial contract to Terra Works at the May, May meeting, we came back and we'll recall that DCNR had come back and wanted to provide additional grant funds, and, and in so doing, we're bringing these, uh, two pieces of work back into the project, and so by change order one, uh, this goes back as, as the resolution describes, to bring it back to the full project cost, um, with the, with the alternates as identified.
The change order price is the same as the alternate?
It's the same as was identified in the initial bid document, yeah.
Any other questions? Roll call?
Roa.
Aye.
Donahue.
Aye.
Pataglia.
Aye.
Manjul Bitner.
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye. Uh, resolutions authorizing signatures, reimbursement agreement, resolution for Porter Street Pedestrian Bridge. Mary Ann?
A resolution of the City of Meadville authorizing execution of an agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for the acceptance of TAP funds, whereas the City of Meadville has awarded, has been awarded $219,940 in TAP funds under the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, Transportation Alternative Program for assurance, for assistance with the Porter Street Pedestrian Bridge Rehabilitation Project. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Meadville does hereby approve the acceptance of TAP funding, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Meadville does hereby authorize the city manager to sign and accept within the reimbursement agreement systems on behalf of the City of Meadville any reimbursement agreement between the City of Meadville and the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation in form acceptable to the city solicitor, and have seen delivered to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania in witness thereof the City Council of the City of Meadville have adopted this resolution in lawful session on May 15th, 2019.
Motion please?
Second.
Second, Your Honor. Gary Johnson, I'll hand it over to you, just in terms of the status of the project and this particular mechanism agreement.
Okay. So, we met with representatives from PennDOT, the city's engineer who was doing the design of the project. Um, it is a federal grant administered by PennDOT. Uh, the reimbursement agreement is a procedural matter with PennDOT as, as far as trying to coordinate, um, payments. Essentially, it's coordination of payments, so the, the contract will submit the invoice to the electronic system, PennDOT's electronic system, then comes to the city to approve, and then, once we approve it, it goes to PennDOT to actually issue that payment. And so it's technically called a reimbursement, though it doesn't seem so in the traditional sense. This is just a procedural matter for that, um, to allow, um, us to proceed with, with actually getting the money spent once it, once we start construction. Um, that is intended to have the design completed this, this summer, bid this fall, and then actual construction of it to occur next construction season.
So, do you think it'll be completed during that construction season of 2001?
It would need to be, yeah, the grant will expire at the end of next year.
This has been going on, how long has this been going on now?
14, 2014.
Does that remember, when we first closed it, the, the replacement cost was like $300,000, you know, the original cost was $100,000. We're approaching, you know, I'm sure it'd be more than that now, but we're approaching the, the cost of, what it would have been to replace it five years ago.
And if you recall, right, the work is replacement of the walking service and the substructure will have that. The superstructure will stay the same.
Who designed the bridge that is there now?
PCE oversaw the project. Um, it was a kit project, it was a design build.
Okay, because it was built by an Alabama firm, and they don't understand solve.
That was part of the problem, yes. Excessive solve, yes, for sure.
So, the grant funds cover 100% of the construction costs, our match is the engineering costs.
Correct.
So, that's our contribution to leverage the, the federal grant funds.
But, there's an interesting thing that Jim Roar just mentioned, that there are a number of these bridges, I forget the name of the company now, it's, they built a lot of them, but, but there's a number of them, if you research, had the same issue.
Really?
Yeah, I mean, it, you, part, if you went up and examined it, you know, it's real light gauge steel, and that's a majority of the problem, is it was real thin steel, uh, and it probably, you know, if you were in Alabama, it probably wouldn't be an issue, but...
In Northwest PA, it's, yes.
But if it had been, if it had been, uh, a heavier gauge of steel, you probably wouldn't be having this conversation now.
You had it in 10 years. 10, 10 more years in Northwest.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call?
Roa.
Aye.
Donahue.
Aye.
Pataglia.
Aye.
Manjul Bitner.
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye. Resolution awarding the bids to Miller Avenue, Miller Avenue and Market Street, Mary Ann?
Whereas bids for construction of concrete straight curb driveway aprons on Miller Avenue from Cutler Street to end of Brick and Market Street from Poplar Street to Arch Street in the City of Meadville was advertised in the Meadville Tribune and due on Tuesday, April 30th, 2019, and whereas Public Works Supervisor, Public Works Support Coordinator, Jeannie Smith reviewed the bids and per bid recommendation letter dated May 15th, 2019, recommended the city award the project to Lindy Paving. Now therefore be it resolved, the City of Meadville, via and through the Council of the City of Meadville, hereby awards the bid to Lindy Paving in the amount of $108,268.65. Be it further resolved, the mayor, controller, and city clerk are authorized and directed to execute any and all documents and agreements necessary to complete the construction of concrete straight curbs, driveway aprons on Miller Avenue and Market Street.
Motion to award the bid?
Go ahead, Your Honor.
Second?
I'll second. Discussion?
Looks like the estimate was 76.
Yep, so our, um, so this project is over budget, uh, at least over, well, I'll say Yep, so our, so this project is over budget, at least over, well, I'll say overestimate anyhow. So, we prepare, going into preparing the bid specifications and the scope of work, city staff uses prior bid quantities from prior years to, in our, what our understanding of that estimating costs are. We have talked, we've met on all of these, you'll see there's several bid awards here. Some of them were at budget or under budget in the prior meetings. We do have the funds available that we can make available to this, it just happens to be over the estimate that we prepared. In all the cases that we're going to discuss, I feel that the bidding is very, is competitive. They're all within a reasonable neighborhood of, of costs, and so, we do have the funds on hand, and we're confident that the, the competitive, the overall bidding was competitive in nature.
Does Stormwater pay for any of this? I'm just curious.
It comes out.
You'll see in this, this particular project for curb, this is just a curb, work was going to be paid for on the Stormwater Fund.
Okay. Any other questions?
Lindy Paving seems to have been a successful bidder on a lot of our projects last meeting and this meeting.
Yeah. I mean, they're, they're certainly a, a large and qualified outfit. They've got a, they're biting off a good bit of workforce here, and John, I had checked, I mean, you had asked prior to the meeting about Highland Avenue, it looks like they have activated that site or-
Those, those guys?
Yep, because we had awarded that contract to them earlier last month, and so they're getting started.
Yeah, I told you, it was something I didn't recognize.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Roa.
Aye.
Donahue.
Aye.
Pataglia.
Aye.
Manjul Bitner.
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye.
Resolution to award bids, paving in various locations. Mary Ann.
Whereas bids for paving at various locations in the city of Meadville was advertised in the Meadville Tribune and due on Tuesday, April 30, 2019, whereas public works support coordinator, Jeannie Smith, reviewed the bids and per the bid recommendation letter dated May 15, 2019, recommended the city award the project to Lindy Paving. Now therefore be it resolved, the city of Meadville, buying through the council of the city of Meadville, hereby awards the bid to Lindy Paving in the amount of $342,556.49. Be it further resolved, the mayor, controller and city clerk are authorized and directed to execute any and all documents and agreements necessary to complete the paving at various locations.
Motion to award the bid?
Someone.
Second?
Second, Your Honor.
Discussion.
Looks like these are all pretty close together, too.
Yep, this is a pretty good clustering of bids as well. Sharon Paving was the next highest bidder, just, just, what, $300 or over?
$42,000. But the next one's under, so.
Yeah.
I looked ahead.
Roll call.
Roa.
Aye.
Donahue.
Aye.
Pataglia.
Aye.
Manjul Bitner.
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye.
Resolution awarding a bid for the ADA curb ramps. Mary Ann.
Whereas bids for construction of ADA compliant ramps and concrete crosswalks at various locations in the city of Meadville was advertised in the Meadville Tribune and due on Thursday, May 2, 2019, whereas public works support coordinator, Jeannie Smith, reviewed the bids and per the bid recommendation letter dated May 15, 2019, recommended the city award the project to Guzik Concrete and Masonry. Now therefore be it resolved, the city of Meadville, buying through the council of the city of Meadville, hereby awards the bid to Guzik Concrete and Masonry in the amount of $16,665. Be it further resolved, the mayor, controller and city clerk are authorized and directed to execute any and all documents and agreements necessary to complete the construction of ADA compliant ramps and concrete crosswalks at various locations.
Motion to award the bid?
I'll move, Your Honor.
Second?
Second.
That's the same company that's been doing the workforce, isn't it?
Guzik has had a number of-
Yeah, both of them.
Both of them.
Yeah, Guzik's well-versed in the ADA ramp, and definitely a qualified contractor with whom we've worked with in the past, and is certainly capable and qualified.
I have a question. If we, if you go back to the bid for $342,000, Lindy Paving has an address of Union City, and here it's New Galilee. Is there-
Oh.
Okay, and Guzik has the Union City address, so my question is, did we get the right bidder?
Yes, if we go back to the prior one for, for paving, so, Lindy Paving is in fact, that's a, just an error. They're in fact out of New Galilee.
Okay, thank you.
Guzik does not do any asphalt paving, so that's just a staff mistake.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion?
It's not a roll call.
Oh, there is, isn't there?
This one's not even done yet.
I'd like to see it.
Roll call.
Roa.
Aye.
Donahue.
Aye.
Pataglia.
Aye.
Manjul Bitner.
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye.
Resolution awarding a bid to CDVG Paving at various locations. Mary Ann.
Bid for milling and paving at various locations in the city of Meadville was advertised in the Meadville Tribune and due on Thursday, May 2, 2019, and whereas public works support coordinator, Jeannie Smith, reviewed the bids and per the bid recommendation letter dated May 15, 2019, recommended the city award the project to Lindy Paving. Now therefore be it resolved, the city of Meadville, buying through the council of the city of Meadville, hereby awards the bid to Lindy Paving in the amount of $220,378. Be it further resolved, the mayor, controller and city clerk are authorized and directed to execute any and all documents and agreements necessary to complete the milling and paving at various locations.
Motion to bid, or award.
I'll move, Your Honor.
Second?
I'll second.
Discussion.
So, I'll just simply note that, again, the bids are fairly well clustered there, and so, it seems to be representative, competitive bid. You'll see the $181,000 was, is the CDVG budgeted amount that were approved, and then the remainder will come out, the capital budget.
Any questions?
No questions.
Roll call.
Roa.
Aye.
Donahue.
Aye.
Pataglia.
Aye.
Manjul Bitner.
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye.
Okay, resolution awarding bid to Allegheny Street and Limber Road. Mary Ann.
Whereas bids for construction of concrete straight curbs, driveway aprons on Allegheny Street, Limber Road, Ellicott Port and Diamond Park in the city of Meadville was advertised in the Meadville Tribune and due on Tuesday, May 14, 2019, and whereas public works support coordinator, Jeannie Smith, reviewed the bids and per the bid recommendation letter dated May 15, 2019, recommended the city award the project to Lindy Paving. Now therefore be it resolved, the city of Meadville, buying through the council of the city of Meadville, hereby awards the bid to Lindy Paving in an amount of $228,591.33. Be it further resolved, the mayor, controller and city clerk are authorized and directed to execute any and all documents and agreements necessary to complete the construction of concrete straight curb driveway aprons on Allegheny Street, Limber Road, Ellicott Port and Diamond Park.
Motion to award the bid?
Someone.
I'll second. Second? Discussion.
You see the bid results there, again, closely clustered between the two bidders, and source of funding is $20,019 Stormwater budget.
And way underbid.
Yeah, under, under the project estimate, yes.
So, it should, even out of all of them that looks like, that, that was 47.
Any questions? Roll call.
Roa.
Aye.
Donahue.
Aye.
Pataglia.
Aye.
Manjul Bitner.
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye.
Last one. Resolution awarding bid for Brick Street conversion. Mary Ann.
Whereas bids for Brick Street paving at various locations in the city of Meadville was advertised in the Meadville Tribune and due on Tuesday, May 14, 2019, and whereas public works support coordinator, Jeannie Smith, reviewed the bids and per the bid recommendation letter dated May 15, 2019, recommended the city award the project to Lindy Paving. Now therefore be it resolved, the city of Meadville, buying through the council of the city of Meadville, hereby awards the bid to Lindy Paving in an amount of $188,835.61. Be it further resolved, the mayor, controller and city clerk are authorized and directed to execute any and all documents and agreements necessary to complete the Brick Street paving at various locations.
Motion to award the bid?
Some moved.
Second?
Second, Your Honor.
Thank you. Discussion.
Again, appears, just the two bidders appears to be fairly competitive and close in their bids, and the source of funding is capital budget.
Just to reiterate something that was said in another meeting, you see paving, but what's not apparent is that there are at least four different pots of money used for paving. The CDVG money, capital borrowing, Stormwater Management Fund, and for certain state roads, I believe there is, yep, a fourth fund, is that correct, Andy?
We can use liquid fuel funds, we've not used that for paving traditionally.
There's one you recently discovered.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, the local federal aid route funding, which will, which will be run through PennDOT, right, which isn't even in our contracts, but you will see, but we're coordinating those projects as well, and you'll see that work being done this season as well.
And we're doing about five miles of paving this year, which is roughly 1/12 of all the cities and the street of Mead, or streets of Meadville.
To your point, though, Jim, I mean, I really need to thank city staff this week. Again, as I indicated, we're firing all cylinders, and I thank Jeannie Smith, who is managing the administrative portions of all these contracts, coordinating with Mary Ann and the county on the CDVG funding, meeting with Nathan and Debbie on the budgeting to make sure we've got the funds in place, so definitely lots of moving parts.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Roa.
Aye.
Donahue.
Aye.
Pataglia.
Aye.
Manjul Bitner.
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye.
Before I do council member statements, I, I want to point out that we have a birthday boy, I'll say it this way, tonight. John, happy birthday, and I wish you the best as well.
I just read a, a scientific study on the internet today that birthdays are good. It concluded that the more birthdays people had, the longer they lived.
That's pretty impressive.
How much did that study cost?
You do know that-
How much money did you spend?
The birthday boy provides pizza tonight.
Yeah, right. I don't do pizza.
But congratulations, happy birthday. Glad to celebrate with you. With that, Sean, I'll start with you tonight for council member statements.
Happy birthday, John. Few things, next Tuesday's election day, make sure you get out there, it's the primary, make sure you get out there and exercise your right to vote. The Memorial Bay Parade is the 27th of this month. It's a nice parade, it's usually, the weather's usually pretty nice, I don't know how we manage that, but it's a nice thing to go see. The June 7th, they're having a sock hop, it's First Friday downtown, and it's a car show also, and I'll be down there with my car. I have a '65 Mustang convertible, if anybody doesn't know. And, and following day, the, it's Second Saturday, and the Mark, the rec complex is having their ribs and music festival on Second Saturday, and it's going to be two tribute bands, and one of those is an Eagles band, and one of those is an AC/DC band, and it'll be kind of interesting, they're doing country bands, and I thought this might-
They do that over there, at the rec complex?
They do it right there in that parking lot, and it's set up pretty well, and they have people come in with ribs, and it's kind of a neat, neat thing to do, raise money. That's all.
John?
The last meeting, I commented about, if you haven't been up on Pine Street, that Callimer project is chugging along pretty good, the last time we met, the first floor was done, this is the time the second floor is done. It's a pretty big project, and it's moving along good. John mentioned the primary coming up next week. If you think your vote doesn't count, you're wrong. A lot of the, a lot of the council elections are decided by fewer than a dozen votes, and a lot of times, it's one or two votes, so your vote really does count. That's all.
Okay. Jim?
John, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Staff, thank you for all the hard work you've been doing with all these bids. It's a lot of technical work, we appreciate all of your efforts, and welcome to our, our newest member of staff.
Thank you.
Nancy?
We raised a lot of birthdays, because Jim Roa had a birthday, May 3rd, so happy birthday related, and my husband had one yesterday, so May is a big birthday month apparently. I want to thank staff for all your time and effort, too, we know how hard it worked in Andy and the rest of staff, and happy Memorial Day is coming up before we have Memorial Day, right? So, we'll be at the parade, and I think that the, even though we didn't have as many people, Andy, I think that the people that did come were very happy, and when I saw the loads that were going through, I kept thinking, we were making a difference by cleaning up Meadville, so I, I still think it was a worthwhile project. I did wonder, did, we put the truck down on Market Street?
We did.
Did it have any success with that?
I, I had texted, I, I didn't get a full report from Nathan, I texted him, I haven't heard back from him to see, I'll, I'll inform you to see if there was a use of it, but there was a-
Just wanted to see if it was worth doing.
I'm going to echo the rest of the council for the staff. You guys are phenomenal, really are. I get to see a little bit more than the rest, when I come in, you're always busy, and just speaking on the run, I, I do want to point out a couple things. Beautification starts at our own front door, that's my new saying, logo on my Facebook. Deb, you did a phenomenal job on, on planning those, you, I know you volunteered your time, and you did a lot of research on the boxes, and I call them herbs, but I guess they're bases, I'm not quite sure, out in the front, but they look very nice, and it dresses up the city, our, our city building, which I hope catches on. So, thank you very much for all your work in that, and all the staff.
You water on Mondays. Why do you water, you water on Tuesdays?
I am so glad we chose not to put them on the second story. I'm not good with ladders. I believe the beautification committee was also involved with my cleanup Meadville. Did you guys? So, I want to make sure we thank our committee for doing that, and all the committees that, that represents the city and, and their time and effort, and again, with Dan Crandall, he's really going to be missed. Dan, Dan was a real key player, and really enjoyed working with him.
We should point out, there was a lot of nonprofits involved with, with the cleanup day, the Rotary Club, the Kiwanis Club, that's what we were trying to do, was coordinate it together with all the other clubs, and so I, I think that's nice, and everybody came together the same day the city of Meadville did, and worked together on it.
Okay, I want to thank them for doing that. And, John, happy birthday again, and then I'm going to ask for a roll call, oh, if you have your cells, you can turn them back on, but roll call to adjourn.
To executive, to, to executive-
To adjourn.
Motion?
Second?
To executive session, Your Honor, for real estate related to potential acquisition of related property, and to seek the advice of council related to the recent court decision that was in today's paper about the zoning hearing board.
Oh, yeah, I saw that.
So, that's the purpose of the executive session.
Okay, roll call.
I'm sorry, we had, John, Your Honor, made the motion?
Motion.
I second it.
Second? Any other comments? Roll call.
Roa.
Aye.
Donahue.
Aye.
Pataglia.
Aye.
Manjul Bitner.
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye.
Mary Ann, thank you for taking the minutes and doing all the stuff that you do, and we're looking forward, Katie, to having you sitting there all the time.
Maybe you'll be down to, what, three jobs?
Adjourn. Thank you.